Okay, welcome to the Pots Grove School Board meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks, and again, welcome everyone for tonight. We have everyone here with the exception of Mr. Leach who's traveling. Is he online with us tonight? Terrific. Hi, Mr. Leach. Okay. The next announcement we have is an executive session was held just prior to this meeting to discuss personnel items. And now we open up for public comment. And we give a two-minute timeframe for speaking on agenda items. Do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Anyone online? Okay. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. I have a couple of things I want to share tonight. First and most importantly, tomorrow is opening day, and we couldn't be more excited. Spent the last day and a half walking around our campus and seeing all of our teachers and staff back on campus and excited to get going for real tomorrow. I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for their preparation. The buildings look great, the grounds look great, the teachers are, look great. They're, they're ready to go. The admin team did a fantastic job prepping for the school year. So we are very excited to get it going for real and look forward to welcoming everyone tomorrow morning at our schools. So that's our first item. And then I also have three items, three presentations this evening. And I see some people that walked in the back, and I, I, I hope they're my first presentation. Oh, actually, you're my second presentation. My first presentation is I would like to invite Ms. Brisha Andrews to our podium if she would be so kind. And she's going to share some information about C-C-R-E-S, and I'll let her explain what that is. Hello.
Good evening, everyone. I'm proudly here tonight to tell you about the exciting plan Lower's PBIS team plans to do with our CREST grant funds. My name is Brisha Armstrong, and I teach third grade at Lower Pots Grove Elementary School, and I am also the coach for our PBIS team. At the end of the 22-23 school year, I applied for a grant through CREST and was awarded $1,500. This was, this was exciting news, and our team cannot wait to get started rewarding our students. The mission of CREST Educational and Behavioral Health Services is to ensure quality educational and behavioral health services for children, families, and schools. CREST remains committed to their charitable mission of providing quality services to schools and being able to give back to the communities they serve. With the funds, our PBIS team plans to roll out a school-wide store for the students to be able to save tickets and earn individual prizes for following the Falcon Four. The four core values that our students are expected to follow are being safe, positive, respectful, and responsible throughout their school days. These are the same core values that are enforced in our district K through 12. As the students are following the Falcon Four and showing positive behaviors, they will be rewarded golden tickets that they will save to purchase items from the PBIS store. The grant funds will allow us to purchase enticing prizes for the students that they will need to work hard to save up for and receive. We will also be using the grant funds to purchase prizes and rewards for our staff, which include our student aides, duty aides, cafeteria staff, bus drivers, and custodians. We are so grateful for this grant opportunity that CREST has provided for our school and cannot wait to see how it greatly benefits our students and staff at Lower Pots Grove. Thank you.
I want to extend my personal thank you for applying for this grant and for doing all the hard work. And I think you're doing great things, you and the team at Lower and across the district, so thank you. So my friends who walked in at the end, I, I'd like to invite you up to the podium. The soundtrack of my late summer is our Falcon Marching Band practicing their program. And we get to enjoy that in bits and pieces all day long. So I asked them to come and share some of the great things they're doing and talk a little bit. So maybe you can introduce yourselves and kind of share a little bit about the program.
Hi, I'm Addie. I'm the drum major of our marching band.
Oh, hi, I'm Caitlin. I'm percussion section leader.
I'm Bella. I'm woodwind section leader.
So currently in our season, we just got our first three movements on the field out of four, which is a very big accomplishment for us because we spent all of band camp working on putting that on the field. And we're actually farther than we were last year with putting everything on the field. We've added visuals, we've done so much cleaning, and we just threw in our color guard uniforms, which look amazing, all of our flags. And we are working towards our final show, which should hopefully be ready by the end of September, maybe early October.
Yeah, it's very exciting because this is probably our first season that we've been this far had. This is our, we're all seniors, and so we were here through COVID with our Halloween hysteria show, which wasn't really much of a show, and Stranded was our first real show. And then last year was actually normal, and this year we're really pushing to reach higher, like more heights. I don't think, I, I don't know how much you guys know about marching band, but we're pushing open class. We're in American class right now, and open class is a higher level than what we've been on. And it's really exciting to try to be reaching that level.
We're very excited this year. We're more involved in the community than we've been previously. We've just gotten done some big community fundraising events such as our car wash, which we did twice this year. We typically only do it once. We just did a breakfast event, and next, in two weeks.
September 3rd.
September 3rd, that's in two weeks. So on September 3rd, we get to introduce cars at the European Car Show in Pottstown. We're being paid, they were first band, but they're paying to come to this event and play. So we're trying to get our name out there and be more involved in the community, so we're really excited about that.
And what's really cool about that is we were actually invited to go play. And that's really exciting because it means that there's community members who know our name and like want us to play for them.
Can I ask two questions?
Yeah.
One, could you like just describe your day? Because you are putting in some hours.
So our band camp day or just like a normal rehearsal day?
Your band camp days.
So do you want to go through the perk day first?
Sure.
Because it's a little bit different.
We come in, in theory, our rehearsal starts at nine, so we get there at eight. And practice while we wait for our tech to arrive. And then when they arrive, we learn, we learn some basics about music such as information about theory and rhythms for about an hour. We then play for another two hours. We either break up into individuals. You know, sometimes we'll break students into leaders and break up into different groups so we can practice our music. We have a little bit of a break, and then we come back at six, which is really like four or five. Move all of our equipment outside, that takes a really long time. And then we play as a full ensemble. We got to see what the woodwinds worked on that day, what the brass worked on, what the guard looked on, and put it all together.
So for the woodwinds, it's a little bit different. We go in around like 11:30, give or take. Rehearsal actually starts at 12, but like we always try to get there early so that we can run over like anything we're struggling with and just so that we're prepared mentally and physically to do rehearsal. And so we were there from 12 until 5, which is a, a little long. It, it was hard, but it, it's, it's a lot of work, but it's nice. And then we would have our dinner block from 5 to 6, and then we would go out from 6 to 9 with everyone else. And so fun times. It's a long day, but it's a lot of fun. And if we did good, we would do thi, like we would play games, we did staff games, and we would compete against the different sections and really get to know each other. That's fun.
One last question. Could you refresh my memory and everyone's memory? How did we do last year?
We placed fourth out of 30, 31 bands.
And my section won out of all of them.
And we got best percussion.
And during our normal season, just at our normal competitions, we only competed with like two or three other bands in our group. And we placed first during all of those competitions.
I lied, I have a third question. When's the first time we can see you?
Well, we're hopefully performing halftime on the, what is it, the first?
Not this week, the second game.
Friday, Labor Day weekend.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Hopefully, we're doing halftime for that, and we have our first competition September 9th at Cedar Crest High School.
Does the board have any questions?
I just want to say, you know, my son came through Pots Grove, and he's a music teacher. And music at Pots Grove has always been important to me because I think it balances the whole student. You know, so congratulations to you. I look forward to coming and seeing you. And good luck, have fun.
Thank you. We do have a lot of fun. It's, it's awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Last presentation tonight is I'd like to invite Ed Doll, Mike Lang of CMTA up to present an update on ongoing and planned renovation work.
Thanks, Dr. Finerty. That's, those are some tough facts to follow, so hopefully you find this as interesting as those two great presentations. Thanks for having us again. We just want to provide a very quick and brief update here. Haven't seen you folks in a while. If you just move to the agenda slide. So Ed's going to provide a construction update on the work that was performed this summer at the middle school. Give a preview for the upcoming work at Rocks in the fall. Then we're going to talk about our progress on the capital planning, specifically with the work that we're optimistically proposing to the district soon at, at West Pots Grove. And then there's some open discussion and questions. And really, the open discussion for us at this point is regarding board schedules and your, the wonky November because there's election and Thanksgiving, so it kind of messes up your regular Tuesday, Tuesday. So we want to just have a, we've got your schedule up here and want to just kind of pinpoint with you folks a little bit of a workshop to see when we could come back and, and kind of give you all the information and enough time to digest to, to consider the, any kind of future work at, at the end. So get your feedback on that. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Ed.
All right. Thanks, Mike. So he mentioned we're here today to, to provide an update on the GISA project. So I'll start with a construction update, so you can scroll to the next slide here. So at, at the April board meeting, the Work Order 1 contract was approved. So that work order includes the Ring and Rocks LED lighting and controls upgrades, and then the music room window replacements at the middle school. For Ring and Rocks, if you remember, that, that school, it's got the centralized control system, which has caused lots of issues. So it's still fluorescent lighting there. So our project, we are, we're going to replace, you know, all the fluorescent lighting, provide new LED lighting throughout, and then get rid of that decentralized control system and go back with, I mean, centralized control system and go back with decentralized controls in each classroom. That, that project was always slated to be a fall project, and so we have the material ordered, and we, we did a pre-construction walkthrough. So, you know, we're anticipating starting there early October. Something we talked about with administration is the LED, the exterior lights or the pole lights, they are LED existing, and then some of them have been failing. When we originally went out to bid and got that material, we excluded it from the contract. The, the cost came back higher than we expected, and we wanted to do some investigative work. So we've done that now, and, and we've learned that that's an LED driver issue. So we'll, we'll work with administration to provide some options. One, to repair those lights or potentially come back with new fixture replacements. So that's something we're also working on for, for Ring and Rocks. For the middle school, for the music room window replacement. So as you're all aware, the windows there have water infiltration issue. And then the music room in particular was identified as the highest priority and something that we could tackle this summer. So the replacements there are complete. We just need to develop a punch list to, to address those items with our contractor. And on the, on the next slide, you'll see we have some photos of that work. So the top is the before with the curtains there, and then the bottom is, is what's installed now. It might be a little hard to see, but you, you can see a, a white tint composition to the bottom window. So in addition to addressing the water infiltration issues, we've also provided a, a window with a white tint. And that should eliminate the needs of the curtains in that classroom to, it'll diffuse the light and, and provide for, you know, better lighting throughout. And then for the, the water infiltration issues, I think something we want to touch on is that the first real test of that was a couple of weeks ago with that big storm that blew through with the, lots of wind and rain. And so there are no infiltrate, no water infiltration issues observed or reported from that. So definitely a good start and a success there.
If I could just add too, these, these pictures were taken about a week or so ago, and, and the job is complete now. It would, we have some other photos that we'll, you know, share with the admin, and maybe they could disseminate to you folks. But if you take a ride over there, you can definitely notice the difference, for sure.
So that's it for the construction side of things. So moving into development, so we are developing the West Pots Grove renovation. At the May board meeting, the letter of intent was approved to develop the selected project options. And we have a refresher on the next slide with those options are. But since then, we've, you know, we've been heavy in design. And, you know, we met with the administration, and we met with Dr. Finerty, Dr. Nippert, with, with Ms. Klohold and Ms., Ms. Young and Dave Risco. And we had, we did a page turn of the 50% review of the drawings there to, to get their input. And then we've also drilled the test bore. So on the previous slide, we had a photo of, of the test bore. It's a 500-foot well. We now have the results of that test bore. And, you know, as we expected, it is a favorable site for, for geothermal. So you can see the, the rig there up top and then the, the apparatus, the testing apparatus in the bottom left there for, for the conductivity test. And then on this slide here are the options that were presented. So these were developed with, we have bi-weekly meetings with the administration, and we also met with Schrader Group, performed a facilities assessment for the district. So these options were developed out of those discussions. The primary driver of this project is the HVAC renovation and then the roof replacement. So the HVAC renovation, we're developing a geothermal water source heat pump system. And then we're also designing a roof replacement. We note there the solar option, and, and really, that's because if you do a roof replacement as part of a solar project, there are IRA incentives that are available for that project. So it's just something we're developing to be considered, and we'll come back with those numbers. And then the other projects, Projects 3 and 4, those are items that don't necessarily need to be done at the same time as this HVAC renovation, but they definitely make sense to consider just because you'll have contractors on site and already mobilized. So that's the generator and automatic transfer switch replacement, and then the fire protection scope. So most of the building is sprinklered today. The 1996 additions are sprinklered. It's just the 1980 section is not. So we would extend the fire protection coverage to that section and then also replace the fire pump. And then the added scope, so the envelope improvements, that's a, some improvements that Ms. Young and her staff, they developed a list and of masonry repairs and then other items that need to happen at West Pots Grove. So that's something that we're also incorporating into this project. And for next steps, so you'll see, we've kind of graded out what we've done so far. So in the next couple of weeks, we'll finalize the construction documents and, and take those to, to bid. So we'll bid the projects to multiple contractors and vendors. We'll then meet with the contractors to make sure that their, you know, bids are truly representative of the scopes at work. And then we'll meet with the administration team to, to review those bids and select contractors. And then we'll come up with a, with a contract and, and numbers that we would bring to the board for contract approval, which, you know, we're expecting fall and, and board approval. We note there by November 9th, and that's really to, you know, order the long lead time equipment and, and make sure that we're, we're ready for summer 2024 construction. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to Mike to discuss those board dates.
Yeah, and just so we're clear, our schedule has our bids coming back, our pricing coming back end of September. So ideally, like I said before, an ideal time period for us to come back to report the operations of facility and board would be like your first Tuesday in November, which is election day. Like, and then we would have the consideration for the full board at the end of November. However, November's, you know, it's got its problems with the election day and Thanksgiving. So what we were hopeful of and, and to discuss is, you know, seeing that we would like some extra time to make sure that, you know, we get the, we get a good amount of bids back. We have time to de-scope the project. We have time to answer any questions or the inevitable, you know, oh, I need another week or something like that. We're just looking to get the right amount of, of numbers back for the district. You know, give us time to scrub them and get, you know, something for you all to digest and consider. Obviously, we're trying to hit the budgets and, and get a project that is in the best interest of the district. So it, it would be tough for us to hit the October 10 and 24 schedule. It's super realistic for us to do something like October 24 and November 9th. That, of course, is not what you traditionally do. Those are two board meetings. I see you do have a, there is a committee meeting on the 24th, a policy committee. Yeah, I don't know if there's a, an option to create an, an ops committee meeting that night or is it a prob? It's no problem for us. We'll, we'll do whatever. Like, we would come to board meeting, board meeting. I just think it's worth, it's worth the extra time to present to you. I don't want to present to you folks on November 9th and then have you consider this like 15 minutes later. So we want to give you all enough time to digest if you have any questions. That's the, that's the real point of having a few weeks or 10, 15 days in between seeing all this information really for the first time and then having to vote on it or, you know, or considering to vote on it in a few weeks.
So to kind of summarize what, what Mike is saying. So typically, we would present this in an operations and finance meeting and then ask you to consider it at the next board meeting. The way November is set up, we have op, ops and facilities November 9th, and that's the only November board meeting. So when we met together, we want to have as many bids as possible so that we have the most competitively priced renovations that we can have. So that's kind of led to this conversation. So we could leave it as it is. We could consider a new calendar, like make some changes and consider a new calendar and bring that to the next board meeting. Would that be the appropriate way to do it? Mr. Zubris?
I, I think the, it's at the district's, I mean, the board's discretion. I think that the CMTA's issue is they do want to have time to present the information to the board and give you adequate time to consider it ahead of that November 9th meeting. So I don't, and, and you also need to do it later in the month so that you have all the necessary information.
Correct.
One possibility we talked about was potentially presenting the information to the board on, on either the 24th or the 9th and, and potentially having a special meeting. But if the board's okay with it, you could have the presentation on the 24th and then take action on the 9th. If that, and that's works for CMTA, right?
That, that works fine for us.
So to have, so I guess the two things you're asking is either like a board, instead of presenting to facilities, the ops present to the full board on the October 24th? Is that a good timetable for you guys?
Yeah, that would work perfectly. And, and quite frankly, from our perspective, it's a, it's a big decision for the district. And it probably, it, it would be helpful to have the maximum amount of, you know, attendance too, to hear the presentation, especially if you are considering some action in a few weeks. Because we'd, we'd rather educate you, and then there, that, that way, there's time for questions and so on.
Would that leave you enough time? Say, for example, you presented, and there was something that the district or the board found objectionable or wanted you to go back and, and workshop. Would that leave you enough time to still proceed and order long lead times, long lead time items to make summer 24 productive?
Yeah, we, we're, our intention on the 24th is everything will be fully baked, right? We'll have contractable numbers to show you, projects that are, you know, to the penny. And so nothing would change between the 24th and the 9th, except if you said, you, you remember, go back to those options, right? Oh, we don't want to, we're just, we're, we just want to do the HVAC and the roof. We don't want to do the fire protection and the generator and, or, you know, some avenue of those. Those will be out of the cart. I mean, the, the, the main jobs are the HVAC and the roof, right? The, the way we look at it, the solar option is kind of a nice thing to look at. The generator and the fire protect- The generator and the fire protection were, were some of the things that were tagged in the Schrader assessment. So I thought it would be nice to at least give you some pricing and options. And then of course, the building improvements we've been talking about for quite a while now. So those items will be kind of à la carte, if you will, to the, to the HVAC and the roof. And then obviously all of it's up to you, you folks at, in, in a few weeks from there.
Normally we have information updated in board docs Friday prior, the 20th. Sometimes it does happen on, on, every weekend or Monday. Would it be possible to have that in by the 20th? Cause then that gives us time to leisurely read over the weekend.
Yeah, I, I apologize. Yeah, everything that you're, all your standards will be met, right? All your protocol, all your standards will be met. So that, that's no problem at all. You know, like I said, we, we probably need like one more week. That's really it, right? It just, it just so happens that the schedules aren't lining up.
And is it still the plan to regularly attend the facilities and operations meetings to provide updates with the information you have at that time?
Yeah, as much as, as much as you, you know, want us to be here, we'll be here to continue to update, obviously along the way.
So I am looking for direction. Are, are we good with that plan as presented? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to action items personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 5.1.
A motion and a second to approve 5.1. Are there any questions?
I, I would just like to make a comment that I, I thought Steve did a great job. I'm sorry to see he left us, but I wish him well.
Okay.
Hi, he'll be here next, for the next meeting, first of the month. And I'll share my thank yous then.
Okay, all in favor of 5.1?
Aye.
Any knows? Okay, I guess we do have to, we do have to say goodbye.
Is Al still on? Okay.
Okay, moving on to 5.2.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion under five, to approve 5.2 through 5.10.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 5.2 through 5.10. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. Moving on to 6.1.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 6.1 with an explanation for the community.
Do we have a second? Thank you.
So this, this item is for our current security vendor. This is the vendor that provides the, our SRO at the high school. So we were, this contract represents a continuing another year with this same provider and with the same officer, who also coaches our, well, is involved in coaching our students in some athletics.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? 6.1 passes. Moving on to 6.2.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 6.2.
We have a motion and a second to approve 6.2. Are there any questions? Hearing none? Could have an explanation, thank you.
So 6.2 is an appeal of a assessment. We get these from time to time. This one involves a Home Depot. So typically in certain circumstances and in this circumstance in particular, the property owner believes that the property is assessed too highly. We have a different number and then we negotiate and that is what's before you.
Thank you for that. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, 6.2 passes. Moving on to 6.3.
I'd like to make a motion, I'm pretty excited about this, that we approve 6.3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 6.3. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 6.4.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 6.4 through 6.6.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 6.4 through 6.6. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Movements pass. Moving on to 6.7.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 6.7.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 6.7. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 6.8.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 6.8 with an explanation for the community.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 6.8 with an explanation.
So item 6.8 is contract with YMCA to reestablish before and after care at our three elementary buildings. We had previously offered this or partnered with YMCA to offer this service to our community members. The service ended in the 2019, 2020 year. So I've been working with the YMCA team to reestablish this. This is something that I have heard from parents that they are interested in and would like the district to work forward with it. This contract is different. The contract language specifies that there's no charge to YMCA unless and until they roster 20 students at each building. Well, yeah, so it'll be charged per building. This is again, a very low cost to the district. We typically hold these before and after cares in our cafeteria. So it wouldn't really require even additional cleaning. So it's, it's a low cost option for us and it is a valued service to, from our community. I will also, this contract is, is under review with our solicitor. There's some, small language changes that we'll have to make before we sign it. But nothing, just to, to specify that these, that everybody has all necessary certifications and clearances and that the contract actually says New Jersey and we are in Pennsylvania. So with those minor changes, I'm asking for you to approve.
Do we, do we charge back for this to the parents?
There is a charge from YMCA to the parents. They, they are staffing it, so there is, there, there's salary that the YMCA is going to have to pay to run this.
Right. And who pays the YMCA?
The parent, no, the parents pay the YMCA if they roster.
Okay.
Just one little comment. I thank you, Dr. Finnerty, for reestablishing this. This is a great thing for a lot of people, a lot of parents.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? 6.8 passes. Moving on to 6.9.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 6.9.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 6.9. Are there any questions?
Yes. Is this the contract we were talking?
Yeah, so I just looked at that again. So in each, in each of the contracts that are presented there, one is the warranty contract, the other agreement, the other one's a confidentiality agreement. Both of them.
Mr. Finnerty, can I actually ask you to come?
Sorry.
Yeah, so both of those agreements, before you describe the warranty self-maintainer service that our technicians can, can be involved in. What Dr. Nippert brought to my attention was the warranty agreement states the, the, the enforcing laws would be enforced by the state of laws in the state of South Carolina. And then the confidentiality agreement would be enforced by the state of New York. Now, we, we're in Pennsylvania, obviously. I believe that is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that is standard because they're basically telling us what we can do with the equipment. So the confidentiality agreement is basically saying, when my technicians open up the device, we can't tell somebody how Lenovo builds their, their equipment. And the warranty agreement describes to my technicians what exactly they can and cannot do to the device. So I'm not sure if there's a correction that needs to be made there or not. To both agreements, the warranty agreement, one, yeah, the warranty is governed by the state of South Carolina. The confidentiality.
That's, that's a negotiable term. And I think on these, on these types of agreement, there's less, give it, there's, basically it's take it or leave it with respect to their language. So I don't think there needs to be a change on that.
Okay, yeah, same thing would be for the confidentiality agreement, which is governed by the state of New York.
Yeah, that would be a standard term.
Right, yeah. So at this point, I would say we don't need to make a change and, and if we're okay with that, we can move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And this is new because we're actually going to do work on repair our own computers.
That's correct, yeah. This is, this is new because we've just started using Chromebooks, which, and they're, they're Lenovo Chromebooks. So this allows our technicians to, to basically repair the device without breaking the warranty that is associated with the device itself. We also get some quicker access to spare parts directly from Lenovo. So it basically allows, it gives us priority, priority service from Lenovo. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? 6.9 passes. Moving on to 6.10.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 6.10.
We have a motion and a second to approve 6.10. Are there any questions? Would you mind explaining briefly for the community?
So item 6.10 is an action item that is necessary based on a, a need for prevailing wage. In the June meeting, the board approved some summer projects, including the installation of safety fencing at Ringing Rocks Elementary and West Pots Grove Elementary. Subsequent to that approval, the vendors were required to pay prevailing wages and that increased the cost beyond what was approved by the board. So acting in good faith, we did not move forward with the project and we're back before you, asking if you would still approve the project with the higher wages. So it's going from, the original budget was 80,000, it's going to 103,889.
And, and because of the nature of the work, they're required to pay prevailing wages on the, for this work. And that was not included in the original bid price.
Could you explain prevailing wages for the community?
Sure, prevailing wages, it's all public construction work is, you're required to pay what's called the prevailing wage. And that's essentially a union rate on, on the project, including hourly rate and benefits. So any contractor who's performing a public construction work in excess of $25,000 is required to pay prevailing wages and submit proof to us that they're paying those as part of that project.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Oh, good, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I mean, it, it seems like it went up to 103,000, but we're really only asking for 11,000 more, according to the numbers in front of me, because we have grants and so forth. So I just want to make that clear for the public, that it's not going up 23,000. It's only going up about 11, which is still an increase. However, not as bad as what we're getting punched with. So it's a lesser of a punch, how's that?
Correct.
And to the $5,000 contingency, maybe we don't need to get into that. That would be helpful too. Then it's, we're only looking at about 6,100 if that, if they don't need that. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 7.1.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 7.1.
Thank you. Any questions with regard to 7.1? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? 7.1 passes. Moving on to committee items 8.1.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the athletic co-curricular motion presented here. The minutes. Thank you, Joe.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We are at new business 9.1. Would you like to go first?
I would, thank you very much. I have two, two items I'd like to talk about in new business. The first item is, involves our email. On our website, we currently do share email addresses for our staff. It is best practice to remove them. Most districts that, that renew their, their websites actually remove the, the email addresses for, for staff, teachers and such. And they do that because that is the primary entryway for phishing attempts, spamming and other bad things in the digital world. I have resisted agreeing to this because I am, communication with our, our community members is very important to me. But we now need to make the decision to roll this back. There are a, a number of other avenues that our community can communicate with our staff through Power School, also through like Class Dojo and Schoology. So we're, we're going to make sure that we keep the, the lines of communication open, but for our security. And also, we don't really want other, like headhunters reaching out to our, our staff and poaching our staff. That's not a small consideration as well. So that has compelled me to, to, to move forward with removing that. We'll be doing that shortly after the start of the school year. So that's one piece of new business. Other piece of new business. We have consistently been data-driven in our decisions on staffing and making sure that we're supporting our, our student needs and, at every building. We have done that when we've seen significant declines in a student enrollment. Over the last three, four days, we have seen significant increases in the number of students, especially in kindergarten. So we are watching that closely. Our kindergarten classes, we saw 24 new students being registered in the last three days. So we saw our class, our class sizes go from 19 to like 24. So I want, I want it clear for the community and for, for our team that we are, we are watching those numbers and looking to see if we need to change how we're supporting our, our students. Typically, we do see some disenrollments at the very, very beginning of the year. People have moved and just never notified us. But we will be watching that and we will, if there's appropriate actions to bring before the board, that's what we'll do. So that's where we're at. And I will also say this, we also have seen increases across the district because we've seen a significant return to the district from cyber school students. So. seen a significant return to the district from, uh, cyber school students. Um, so that is, that is good news for our budget, good news for our students. Um, so I'm very excited about that. Uh, and if I may, just add one other, uh, item. Uh, I do want to call attention to, to administrators in the, uh, audience, uh, who are on the agenda that we, uh, approved earlier. Uh, Mr. Thomas Frevert, uh, if you would stand, sir. Uh, Mr. Frevert has served the district for, uh, a, a number of years. He is now going to be our middle school dean of students. We're very proud to have him aboard, so, uh, congratulations, sir. I'd also like to call attention to, uh, Ms. Sarah Matts, who I see right there, hiding. Uh, Ms. Matts, she's going to be our interim principal at, uh, Ringing Rocks and she has served the district as a, a special ed, special education supervisor, uh, for, uh, elementary. So, uh, congratulations and, uh, we wish you all the luck in the world. So, thank you. All right, now I'm done.
Thank you. I'd like to go to Mr. Leach to see if he has any new business for us tonight.
Not much for me, um, because I'm on the video here instead. I just want to welcome all the new staff and welcome everybody to a brand-new school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's nothing for me because the students aren't here. Um, so, well, I shouldn't say there's nothing for me. I too want to welcome everyone back, uh, to their first week of school and just the excitement. I want to thank you, uh, for the invitation to attend the opening day with the teachers and staff. Uh, that was, what a privilege to be there and just see the energy in the room and just wishing everyone a great year ahead. Um, and that's pretty much it for me. Patty, do you have anything?
I piggyback it. I wish everybody a, a great school year and a good night's sleep because they're coming tomorrow.
One of these days I'll learn to turn this on. But, uh, both my son and my daughter participated in the band and, uh, our band is extremely good and has done, does wonderful things and I hope, I, I hope they continue in their successful ways.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. Um, first, um, I just wanted to, um, let everyone know, I went to an Upper Potts Grove Township meeting last night and, um, it was the first, I had heard of it, apparently other people had heard of it, but there's, um, new townhomes going up, um, attached to Connington View and condos going up, um, near Upland Square. Uh, tentatively. Um, they had the plans, they were talking all about traffic and cul-de-sacs and, as one called them, cul-de-sacs. I was like, no. I know, there could be. Um, so anyway, that's just something to, to keep an eye out for because it could mean additional students for us. I do not know how many of either, um, townhomes or condos. So, um, anyway. And the other thing is, I just wanted to make sure that the whole tree thing is, is that getting, taken care of?
So, uh, over the past, uh, last few storms, uh, and, and with the damage that the ash bore has caused a, across Pennsylvania and it has affected the district, we have had a number of trees that we had to take down. We did have, uh, a tree that was on our property that actually, uh, fell on our neighbor's, uh, property. Uh, so, we've, um, uh, we've been taking some trees down. We have looked at, uh, the need to take down any more emergency trees and we're putting together a bid to actually look at some of the trees across the district that are, uh, in jeopardy of falling in a hazardous way. Uh, so we will be bringing that to the board, uh, probably next month. Uh, I'm looking at Ms. Young for that. Um, uh, so that's kind of where we're at. There is a significant number of trees and some of them are perilously close to, uh, the Ring Rocks, uh, people's driveways. Um, so we're, we're aware of them and we're moving as fast as we can to address them.
Yeah, I was, when I was out with dogs the other night, um, walking behind Ringing Rocks, I really took notice because now I'm paying attention. Before I wasn't, like, until I got the call, like, um, from the homeowner, asking me to come up and take a look. Uh, I had no idea. Um, so, anyway, but I did tell him I would speak on his behalf. He wasn't able to come tonight. He was gonna come and make public comment, but he was, um, he was not able to, so. Anyway, and that's it. Everybody, have a great day tomorrow. I wish everybody the best of luck.
Okay, moving on to ten point one, public comment. This can be made on anything you wish to speak on, uh, for a period of two minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, how about online? Okay. Need a motion to adjourn? Okay, thanks. Good night, everyone. Good luck this week.